Nine o'clock, we'll go ahead and open up the meeting of January 2nd, 2018. Welcome everybody, please silence or shut off your cell phones if you would please. And Happy New Year to everybody. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Melanie, additions or deletions to this agenda at this time?
Yes, David Burnham will like present the form of a contract.
Commissioners, do you have any additions or deletions?
No.
Now with that, we'll got a couple of minutes here before the nine oh five, which is a timed item. Jump right on down through here, maybe we can do one of the other things real fast. Are you expecting other people from Paisley to come in?
No.
Well, I think we can go ahead and jump right on to the nine oh five then. So trying to work something in between there. So Mr. Paul, Mr. Roberts are here from the city of Paisley. I've been part of this with some communication. But why don't you step up here and give us an overview? We have print out here that you supplied us. But go ahead and give us an overview of what's going on in Paisley there.
Okay. This is Dale Roberts, he's the president of our council. And he's kind of my bodyguard. We had a kind of a wild election, so he nominated me and somebody else said that nominations are closed. So he follows me around now to make sure.
Sit down, relax.
He follows me around now, I think, to make sure nothing happens, because he doesn't want the job again. But he was nice enough to get up this early and come and back me up here. Do all of you have a copy of the proposal that we sent?
Yes.
I have a whistling, but I haven't read it.
Okay, alright. I have some more.
Well, the purpose that we're here for is to acquire some funding for the Paisley Community Center Heating System. The cost is, we have some bids and I'll give you a copy of that. Each has a copy of it. In Paisley, we have problems getting bids. Nobody wants to come and, whoo, nobody wants to come and give us a bid, so a lot of things. So we're still waiting on other bids. But when I got my information from Ronnie, this is the company that she used at the fairgrounds for some projects. And she recommended them very highly and said that they were much more cost effective than any of the others that she did get. So I'm unhappy with this, or we'll see where it goes. If we did get a different bid and the amount changed, if there was, we would definitely be in contact with you. But all of a sudden, we had this super low bid and needed to find something like that. What the cost, as you can see, is $7,090, which is amazing because we need, I talked to Surprise Valley, and they talked to Bonneville, and they gave us some energy assistance money in the amount of $2,000. And that's based on tonnage of the cooling. And I really haven't got a good explanation on like tonnage of bids or anything from anybody. But anyway, they give you, give us $800 a ton. And this, for this particular system, it comes out to two and a half ton. So that's why they're looking at 2,000. We have our own, we started a little pod of our own, and we have $90 in there at this particular time. So what we need is $5,000 to make this, to get the heating system in. To be able to go ahead and get started on it. Obviously, you're aware that what the fit, the system is like now. A little tiny heater up in the corner that looks like a, maybe a screen for a computer or something. And it's constantly, it's very noisy, it's inefficient. During those cold spells, or the period in December, that thing never shut off, 24/7. So it's just, and you guys have had to listen to it, I know. I did some averaging, Surprise Valley gave me some numbers on what it costs. And it costs about, the average for the winter cold months for the last three years, this doesn't take in this last December, but it's $330 a month. Some of those months were up in the 400s, so that's what come out there. We've had to do maintenance on this thing continuously. And as you all probably are aware, there's not many electricians left in Lake County. So my son's an electrician, I tried to get him to come home, but he didn't, because he was up to it right now, so. The usage for the facility is suggested donation usage, so it's basically a free usage. There's a multitude, the building is used constantly. Funerals, weddings, card tournaments, government agencies meet there, art groups, free exercise groups, the mosquito festival, ranchers use it, blood drives, EMTs are there to meet there sometimes, VIPs, do community gatherings, they have a Cinco de Mayo thing for kids, they have a Christmas program, they have, probably have an Easter egg hunt, anything else they got. The school uses it for a prom sometimes. We've been kind of lucky to have the cowboy poetry present there the last couple of years. We're hoping that will continue there. So that's just a few that I could come up with off the top of my head, yes.
So Mayor, would it be fair to say that even though the city doesn't make a lot of money off the center, it's an economic hub for the community in general because of all the activities, the people that are brought in, et cetera?
Right. It is, it's a community center. It is a community center.
One other quick question, when you talked about the average bill, have they given you, have these folks been able to give you any projection on, not the bill itself, but on a reduction based on a better system, more efficient system?
Yes, he quoted me in about $200 a month, in the winter. And he was quoting on the sun.
Yeah.
Larry, Larry, no, this could be Larry Woodward from, the season's changed, yeah. We had Surprise Valley there for, we met with him a couple of weeks ago, I guess. And I had Lynn Culp, and he went all through it, we looked at all the insulation, under the building, in the attics. And he was pretty, everything seems to be where it should be. We're even happy with the building setup and everything, it's just that the system is still out of balance there.
Maybe one other.
Sure, that's where I'm at right now, if you've got any questions.
Well, you know how much we support this, and support the center. But just, so we have this on the record, just to display the significant need the city has because of the lack of funds. The last time I had heard that our general fund in the city was like 15,000, 16,000, is that accurate? Just the general fund?
Right.
Yeah, so you don't have a lot of available money. I mean, we pay for all the services in the community for the whole year on.
Very much so. Basically, our water and sewer system, and they're fine. So that was another thing I had written down, is that some economic deal came by, and you guys don't know what to do with it. And it looks like it might fit Paisley, just ship it my way and I'll go get it.
We did try to spread it.
Yeah. Right now, we have a really good council, I'm excited. We have two young ladies, Ruth Robinson is the custodian at the school. She's lived in Lake County all of her life. Kim Way is, works at the prison, and she is now on the council. And she is young, and she was at Schultz, and so she, I think she was at Schultz.
No, Schmidt.
Schmidt, yeah, she was at Schmidt. And so between the two of them, they can handle the Facebook community out there. So it's given us, old guys, a little broader field of, you know, the more people you have that can talk to other people, then those people aren't saying, well, they did this and that, then they gotta go through somebody that knows really what is going on. So that's, I think that's really gonna help. And then we got Bob Davis, who is ancient, oh, he's probably the same age as I am, but I call him our historian, because if anything comes up, we can, he can, he can look back. And so can Dale, since he was on the council before, so.
I'll ask it for you.
Yeah.
As far as funding source, the Bonneville has some funding. Have you got, have you checked the Energy Trust of Oregon?
Yes, this Larry Woodward checked that for us, and we don't qualify because, I don't think, I think it's because we don't have Bonneville power. I mean, we don't have the civic power. He could not get it in that area. So I think what it is, is Surprise Valley gets it through Bonneville, the same energy.
Same program type.
Yeah, that's what I came across, so that's what it looks like to me.
Well, I've been in support of this for quite some time. I kept it somewhat in front of the board through our Economic Development Video Lottery Dollars. Even a year ago, I talked about waiting on a proposal from Paisley to come forward. So I've been sort of the lead commissioner on this for some time, waiting for you to get this together.
Sorry.
Well, no, this is, for a community that size, that building is truly a community center, as you just mentioned, where there's so many people use it, and that's what they're fighting for and everything. As far as commissioners go, I'd really like to set the meeting there where I can hear, because if your heating system is sort of antiquated. So we make our decisions tomorrow in our regular meeting. What I will be proposing to the board tomorrow is to probably fund this out of two different funds. The video lottery dollars and the community development dollars, I've been working with Ann Cromryne. And by me disclosing that, the two commissioners can visit with our legislature budget officer and see if they want to just go with that way or not. I would, I will be moving it forward tomorrow.
Great, I appreciate that, yeah.
I'll look forward to a nice, warm community center.
Alright. Can I have four minutes more?
Three and a half.
Three and a half, okay. I just got some other projects that we're working on that I want you guys to be aware of, so if it comes through you in any way, shape, or form, maybe you could back us. We're working on a speed zone change. And I think we've got an approval to drop the speed in Paisley from 35 to 30. As you know, all of you have driven up the hill going out of town north, a trucker did not stand a chance with the new speed signs, the way they are, to ever get down to 35 or 30 coming down that hill. So the last contact we had with them, they were gonna expand both ends a little bit, make it more logical, not just what the convention.
And to put the audience on the camera, when you say talking to them, we talk about ODOT.
Right, thank you. Then we also are trying to change the school, but we can't do any of that, the school has to do that. But we have a blinking light sitting in a school zone at a crosswalk beside the school, and we only have two kids cross there. All the rest of our kids that cross 31, cross at Mill Street, right beside between the gas station and the restroom. And so we're trying to get that, that moved back, that one deal. And I talked to Dennis O'Leary, and he thought we could probably do it in three days with his front-end loader, it wouldn't cost the state a dime, but obviously, they didn't go for that one. So we are still working on that, too. Dale's working on the basketball courts, they've become antiquated, and he's got some funding on that. And if you'd like to talk about that real quick?
Well, yeah, we, I talked to Ann Cromryne and she turned me on to some ways to get the money. And we got the matching funds from Ford Family Foundation, which we already got the check for. And we've already done, approved and got the money from Oregon Department of Recreation, which is really surprising they did that, because our project is like, not even on their scale. You know, it's so low, but I guess luckily, since that's the only place we have for kids to go play basketball and the whole community. Anyway, we got 100% funding to get that repaid, tore out and repaid. It's gonna get done in June.
How much was that funding?
How big? 30,000.
Well, fortunately, there's people, even for those small projects, that know people, so it's a wonderful, wonderful project.
As long as we can get the paving, as long as the contractor can get paving equipment that he saw, he's trying to get that lined up, to do that in June, and he's gonna do two streets at the same time, that will not give us a correct order.
Great, good. And we're gonna have to replace Dwayne, he wants to retire and join us. The second generation of people that's been on maintenance, Matt, county, city maintenance guy, so he knows wherever he had is, and to turn off and turn on, and so that's gonna be a tough one to do. We do have two people that are interested in building, which is amazing. We're working on a nuisance ordinance, so you'll probably see us again. I think we're going to go ahead and finalize it tonight, and then we'll get back to you guys on some other issues with it and go from there. Our water system, if you guys know, we had, they changed the amount of arsenic levels, and we have the same water, but they changed the numbers, so we've been in compliance with their numbers now for eight months. So we have to be in compliance for 12 straight months, so hoping to get that. And Surprise Valley's looking and wanting to buy water from us, and so that's gonna be kind of a tough issue, to get their plant running again, because it hasn't been for like six months. With that, we really appreciate your time.
So encourage you, Ralph, as the mayor, to make this Go Act meetings, some of the Economic Development meetings, and Area Committee on Transportation, meet quarterly. As far as being a lot of opportunities to work with ODOT whenever we have these things and on the economic development side. We have a hard time getting much of the small communities mayors or councils to make those, but you do have a seat on there as the mayor. So we need to update that on both of those, and the vice chair of the Go Act and I need the chair of the Go Act. And a good opportunity to try to leverage any dollars or numbers going on on the highways or economic development as grants and stuff come to work.
Great, so you'll let me know?
Yeah, I'll get you, I'll make sure that Pam has your name so that you get notified.
Can we get your email address? Okay.
I've got her email address.
Well, back to Surprise Valley and their need of water funding. Do you have the water? We don't know, we have a lot of questions.
I think that one's a little bit sensitive, probably not going to engage a whole lot on that discussion at this time.
I just don't think, yeah, I don't think it's at that point, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it, so I've got some plans.
We do chat with our water masters a few times a time, so.
Oh, yeah, no, we do, too. We've chatted with everybody on every side, so it's.
Gentlemen, everything you gave us for an update was tremendous, the work you're doing there in the community. It's just gonna be great, really, really appreciate your service there.
Appreciate you guys.
Alright, our next item, a couple of minutes late, 9:15.
It's alright.
No, you're good, problem. Friends of Lake County Library, come on up, ladies.
I don't know if you have copies of.
For the record, we have a new newspaper assistant, but use your name or say your name, she'll get the minutes correct.
I'm Margot Dodds, and I'm in the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Committee. These are flyers that have information to have, I'm happy to pass them around. Do you want to?
I have one.
We have been our. So Margot came and talked to me three weeks ago, and I told her to get on the agenda, so today she gets to present to the board.
And I'm here with Shelley Batty.
I'm Shelley Batty, I'm the resident of Lakeview. And I get to start by giving you that overview of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and then Margot and I answer the questions you may have. Everyone knows Dolly Parton, and she's really famous for being really flamboyant and plastic on the outside, with a great heart on the inside. People won't realize just exactly how true that is. Dolly Parton's father was functionally illiterate and never learned to read, despite trying. And so her heart is behind literacy and reading and early childhood education. In 1996, she started getting a book to every child in her county, every month. And it was so popular that it spread. And so, starting in 1996 with one county, by 2003, they had given away a million books, one child at a time, one book a month. In 2014, the Library of Congress awarded her the Literacy Medal for excellence in education and for excellence in a nonprofit that does what it says it does without wasting people's money. As of 2014, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library is giving a book a month to one million children. And we want to be a part of that, and we want to make Lake County a part of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. We are here today to answer questions about it for you, to tell you what we've done so far, what we want to do in the future, and to ask for your support. Monetary support would be wonderful, but I know budgets are tight, and that may be something you look at down the road. We really want to let our support from when we talk to other organizations. The way it works financially is for $25 a year per child, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library can mail a book to that child's home. We will sign up children through the hospital, the local OB-GYN, the Department of Human Services, and the home visits, local churches, daycares, grandparents, parents, whoever we can talk to. We started signing people up today. And then the book gets delivered, the parents are never charged, and we go to community organizations, Rotary Lions, Seraptimus, the County Commission, to ask for donations. We also get donations from individuals. The friends in the library voted on their first meeting in December to go forward with this, and to try to get donations, and try to make it something that would happen in Lake County. In this first month, we've gotten $4,000 in donations. $8,000 a year will give every single child in Lake County between ages of birth and five years old a book a month. So this is a really doable, really exciting thing. And then to sweeten the pot, the Family Foundation out of Wilsonville thinks it's so important for the state of Oregon to up their literacy rates, that they will fund half for the first three years.
Or across the state.
Across the state. They will fund half. So the way it works is that the Dolly Parton Library handles all the paperwork, they mail out the books to the kids, they create an invoice, and the Family Foundation pays half of it, and we pay the other half.
So right now, with your $4,000.
So right now, with our $4,000.
And they match.
And they match, however many kids we sign up.
Well, it's based on the number of children that are enrolled.
Yeah.
So if we have three children enrolled this month, they send us a bill for half of the amount of those three children.
I'm just trying to make sure the math's right for a full year at a time.
The math works for a full year with, we have four, not, we don't have quite 400 children in the county, in that age group. So we're not expecting to have full enrollment.
Sure.
Usually, a year usually, it kind of builds. 60% is normal in areas that have this.
Okay.
Right. To run the numbers and do the math, in the first month that we were soliciting donations from individuals and organizations, we collected enough money that with the match, we can theoretically provide a book to every child in the county. We are continuing to talk to people such as yourselves and to other organizations, because we would like to have the money in the bank to feel comfortable knowing that we would be able to do this into the future. This is a really, these are really special books. It starts, the first book a child gets is the Lujana Cook, and it goes from there to the last book they get on their fifth birthday, celebrates their birthday, and is customized to them, and them getting ready to school, and how exciting it is to be going to school, and what fun it is to go to school, where you'll have a big library, where you'll have even more books. And the way the books are written, they're very high quality, they're really nicely done, great graphics. The fly covers have tips for parents. So if you're a parent that's already really engaged with your child, and really engaged in education, reading to your child, this kind of gives you the warm fuzzies that you know you're doing it right, and that you're doing what it takes to get your child ready. And for someone who may not be as literate, or a new parent, or whatever, this gives them some really concrete tips as to what they can do to help with their child's early education, and to help with their child development. One of the questions that have come up is bilingual, and right now, all of the books are coming out in English. But we have, I've found, because I'm an ESL teacher, that's one of my other things, that if you have a child's book that's in English, and you have a parent that doesn't speak English, and they're sitting with their child, and they're looking at the pictures, and they're pointing at the words, the child and the parent are learning together. And it brings a great deal of positive reinforcement and positive momentum into the community. I don't have the statistics with me today, it's been a vacation.
Right, I had an onboard book with Dolly's name on it, but it turns out not to help.
But there are some, there are some really great statistics about kids that are on this program, nine months out, a year out, and three years out. And the chance of them doing well in school are significantly increased. The chances of them graduating from high school 12 years later are significantly increased by this program. So we're asking for a letter of support that we can, when we talk to all of the organizations and to individuals, say, here's a letter, the County Commission believes we're doing good work, support us. We have a similar letter from the city, from the town of Lakeview already.
We should have jumped in there with the city of Paisley, because I'm sure they would write a letter of support.
That's true, I was up in Paisley last night, I'm going up to talk to the VIPs in Paisley on the 17th of January, and I know there's people up there already that know that, because we've been talking.
I will just say really quickly here, I more than support the letter of support, and I'm not here to suggest a financial means right now, but I'm gonna support financially you all, too. What you're doing is tremendous, this is great.
It's a wonderful program. They do send, twice a year, they send a bilingual Spanish-English book to each age group. So, you know, the babies get one, then you get two bilingual books a year, you know, 1-year-olds and 2-year-olds, so.
I really like Shelley's thoughts there. Bilingual works both ways, some people only know Spanish, and they learn English that are bilingual.
Right.
So I really like them, because I think there is a certain amount of barrier there for some of those families. That would really help, so.
And.
I think, I think that, everybody always thinks just one way, and if you flip it around, it makes a lot.
Children's books are vitally important for teaching English as a second language to those adults.
Absolutely.
This is a wonderful resource. Something else that has shown in the research that's been done is that every child in the community has this own little library of their own, and when they get to school, every one of those children will have the same background of having read all of these same books. It gives them something in common, it gives them something to talk about, it gives them a level playing field, is that you can develop relationships with their school classmates.
So for, and I'm very supportive of, Margot and I visited quite some time ago, but I guess, how do the people, how do the kids and the families sign up, is that through school, through the library? How do you reach out?
Well.
How's your outreach work?
We, I'm working with the school in Northlake, and I'll be coming up to Northlake.
You knew by the fishing, right? Told you we need to be inclusive of Northlake.
I'll be coming up and talking with Deb Diamond, and she's already, I think, presented it to the.
it to the current principal. The previous principal, Donna, knew about the program and had tried to get it going. She was talking about doing things like sending the application and information home with the backpacks that come home with children on Friday, that have food in them for the weekend, you know, as a way of maybe reaching out. I think a lot of it will be word of mouth. I'm thinking grocery stores, food banks. It's simple to sign up. You can sign up online, which is obviously wonderful for us because you don't have to deal with paper, but it's also, you can sign up on paper, and then we have a volunteer who can keep track of that database and funnel in.
Well, we, I'm very supportive, as you know, being engaged with early learning is that age bracket has critical to the success. When you say sign up online, for a mom and pop that's watching on a camera there, where would they go?
You know, the thing is, we just, early December, we said, "Yes, let's do it." Got the paperwork down to, I know they told me where they came from. They actually came to Paisley. People at the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Foundation staff came to Paisley and talked with us. I don't remember exactly where they're from, but we nailed all the paperwork off and signed our memorandum of agreement. And then Christmas happened, and I have not seen the paperwork, and Amy was called last week, so I don't have the paperwork. But I will bring you guys paperwork if you would like, so that you can have it and sign people up as you see them. And it has information on it, how to do it.
Well, you know, that's something that we might even want to put on with Melanie on our website, you know, once we get that link.
Yes.
Probably have that on the homepage.
And there are, there are a number of places in the community that will have sign up forms available, including town hall and the library. The Corr, the radio station, came to the Friends of the Library and requested that they be our premium sponsor for as many years in the future as we want to hold them to it. They will do ongoing advertising for us, they will do a monthly fundraising campaign for us, they will make sure that they can do everything possible to keep everything in front of people. They will also add our information on donating to the libraries to their packet that they give to businesses when they go out and make sales calls. And we will be announcing and putting a link on the Lakeview website as soon as it's available.
So one of the, that's a really good, I'm going to take my foundation right on it, because that's something that...
I was just going to say, there's two things to me that are in front of us right now. We'll need to figure out what all needs to be in our letter. Melanie will be drafting that, so maybe she can work with you ladies.
I believe they may have to draft.
We have a draft letter that you can tear apart.
We can have Melanie work on that. And the second thing is, Commissioner Winters has been, as he said, visiting with Margot about this in the past, is just pick out a time certain here in the future as this unfolds for us to consider a financial contribution as well.
Personal contributions, I can handle. Right here on the back of this, you'll sign up. And you can either pledge or send a check.
How much interaction do you have with ESD and the early learning folks?
My understanding is that there are members of our committee that are doing that. I'm not sure where it stands right now.
Anything to ask across...
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we've got, you know, there are probably 10 of us. I think four are really active, or five are really active, and I'm not sure, what happened with the rest of it.
Everybody's right there.
Everybody's right there. I know that the home visits and that are all already on board to take the documentation with them, which people are involved to take the documentation with them. There's someone else on the community that is making a similar presentation to this to all of the churches in the area, so I can put that way.
December is not a great time to talk to the churches.
Also, when you mention KORB, Margie is really community oriented, I appreciate that. In Northern Lake County, we have a radio station there, and they also, that can get it out to your parents. In Northern Lake County, of course, they allow PM, and I can get you a public service person with one of the radio stations I know. It's a country western. But I can get you that contact, and they do free public service announcements.
That would be great.
Parentship in that area. So obviously, right now, consensus of the board to do the letter of support, Melanie will draft that, and Shelley or Margie will write one if you have to, whenever she gets it done.
Yes.
Either one of us or to Amy Hutchins, Librarian Director.
So, you just tell us it's ready and we'll come over and get it up.
And question on the financial side, as I mentioned, you get contributions and then I would assume you probably have a goal for long ago to be, is if you have this amount, you would be able to carry this on looking to, you've got three years and you're going to have the match amount, I guess they call a match dollars per dollar basically, but then after that, then it would be sort of community. So if you could build a reserve to sort of carry there, that wasn't hit all of the time, I'm assuming that's sort of what it sounds like your goal might be.
We first started talking to the Friends of the Library about bringing this on as one of the Friends of the Library projects. Their desire was that we have at least $5,000 in the bank at any one time, so guaranteed into the future. My personal goal is that it's $8,000 to do this for a year, so I would like to see at least a year in the bank at any one time.
That makes perfect sense to me, too.
And this is, it's just, there are no downsides to this program, and there's so few things that you can say that about. But this has been on record since 1996, so it's got a 20-year run already. And it's already delivering a million books a year in multiple countries, and so why aren't we taking advantage of that for our kids?
Right here in the backyard.
Right here in the backyard.
Right here in your own postbox. Sounds fine. Yep, sounds great.
I think we're going to appreciate it.
And safe and well.
And my last thing is that it makes a perfect book in for Lake County because we have Dolly Parton to start and writing up Teeny Tiny, and then the Daily Foundation to help them leave college at the end. And we can easily, with that type of support, be the most educated, most high-tech, really wonderful county in the state.
We have to look at our future. We tend to focus on today, but tomorrow, our kids will, of today, this, that, and tomorrow.
No, very, very well done, ladies.
Thank you. Very, very, give me their contact, and I'll send you that radio station. Okay, moving down our agenda. Kevin Hock from the Road Department is here for our annual, semi-annual funding.
Yeah, yeah. Zach.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So, A. O. Lee, this is the Surface Transportation Program Exchange Agreement with, to exchange federal dollars, 94 cents on the dollar for state funds. If you have the first page, it says there on number two, it'll be exchange for the cost of fossil lake road, Milliken Road, and Orange Lane, all of Lake County up for Surface Street of this pass. In the total amount of $2,000, $239,000.
It's there on the first page.
Yeah, on the first page. We're trading $254,369.
And with that, we're able to make those dollars stretch further because of the federal guidelines that come with the federal dollars, engineering, environmental studies and everything. So we're able to stretch these dollars out actually further with the exchange, even though it's 94 cents on the dollar, it goes further in Lake County.
Yep. Yeah, that's six cents, we need to start to cover all those.
All the administrative fees. So, the last page includes...
We do have a long agenda for tomorrow.
So, with that, Kevin, is there any other updates? I know you gave us good updates here a couple weeks ago. Is there anything you need to update us on?
The last meeting we discussed there before I left Independent Power Producers and Right Away, potential policy moving forward, so I've entertained and researched here, and I'm working with Mr. Bailey currently to initiate a draft version of the policy for that. I will tell you that with all, with the high percentage or large mileage of just simply public ways, I'm working with him to see what the determination will be as to who documents that in account of whether it is a road department function or a planning function.
On the public ways.
On the public ways. On the county roads, that will end up going through the road department as it should for documentation and knowing where everything is. I hate the word regulation, but at least we have some specifics that we can require for depth and with the way from the road and things of that nature. But for public ways, including roads or sections of public ways that have no survey or anything like that, I'm working with him to see what the best way to do that is.
Yeah, it's, the more development we're seeing, especially in this, or really bringing up a lot of those questions. We've dealt with some of them over the past, but I think, Kevin, when you get there and we have it cut and dried, and the planning department is absolutely the correct place on a lot of it, because that's where the plotted maps are and all that, plotted roads. But definitely, you need to check up on that yourself after they do the research or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Because of, I tell you, we're just seeing more and more coverage.
Well, in research with, through Mr. Worley at AOC, it's, that's proven to be beneficial because there's a lot of things that come into play, including video logs of our routes. So in the event that Independent Power Producers chooses to come down on Right Away, in the event that we permit that, we need to have documentation of what damages or, not done that did take place or didn't take place on our roads. All of those things have to go into this policy.
Well, several different of our departments are being contacted from the industry developers wanting to know all this, and if we get it cleaned up straight up, going over with...
Yeah, that, the part about the county roads will be pretty simple to clean up and put into a policy because Section 8 of our current application for permit includes special provisions that we could require anyone to do within our area. So, county somewhat already lined out for that. This other policy will reference it and make it a cleaner, cleaner process. The public way part of those, what I have to work with Mr. Bailey on.
Right, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, you being the building official by the ORS gives you a certain amount of jurisdiction.
Road official.
On the road official.
That's what I'm working with.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
He can have that day if he wants.
He can be community corrections director too, if he wants to.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm working with Mr. Bailey on for determination of some of that language, so.
Well, I'm going to be, Commissioner, I'm going to be real interested in the public way part of this because they're not our roads.
That's where I'm at with it, yeah.
They're not, but I think it was before your and Ken's time, well, no, there had been a public way up with Kittredges, I think, was an issue. Before that, it was Montgomery's, and the road official, not the building official, has some jurisdiction to it. But I need the legal to say absolutely what that is, because whenever it gets down to it, a lot of them, we just said, "That's, go up to the court, we're not going to do that."
Well, we have to entertain resources of everybody's available resources when we do this too, because there's, I'm assuming, projects, especially in Northlake, there's a lot of public right of way or public, in terms of public ways, and that road department does not have specific maintenance jurisdiction for, so as soon as I get some language from them, we'll be able to look forward. I have some drafted up now.
And maybe within the policy, we can absolutely clean that up quite a bit, but quite a bit of, obviously, you're getting surveyed and they have to be within...
Well, yeah, it'll clean it up for us, it'll clean it up for potential developers, it'll make things more...
Yep, appreciate you putting the work in on that. Anything else, sir?
Nope.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of this funny exchange tomorrow. Thank you.
Now we get to do the building official. You're fine now, Jim. Come on up.
Good to see you. Oh, thanks.
So I asked Jim to come in today, give us some update, hopefully, if there's a lawyer to...
Okay.
Go ahead and give us an update on our contractual agreement.
So, Clamath County last week, maybe even the week before, gave us notice on January 31st, they will be done doing any inspections for Lake County, any plan review for Lake County, and will not be contracted with the state of Oregon any longer for the electrical inspections. So they have given us notice on all their agreements there across the board. So I've been in contact with the state numerous times, Brad's been in contact with Jay Henry from the state. He's our regional, regional person, even though he's not come to Lake County yet, but he's coming here the 23rd of January. But I have talked to a few people just recently, Friday, and actually this weekend, I came into work Saturday and got a lot done on Saturday. Yeah, nobody here.
Thank you.
But I actually got some really good information this morning and, and Friday and Saturday. I don't know if it's information that we, I will be bringing a proposal here soon. So, something that I really think will be good for us, but that's up to you guys. I will say, it's a need. I mean, we, we are busy. We're not slowing down, we're getting busier. Any given day in Lake County, we do anywhere between 20 and 25 inspections every Monday and every Wednesday, clear across the board, from South Lake County all the way to North Lake County, a couple in Blush and Adele every now and then. Plan review, we're busy with plan review. Plan review is going over constantly to Clamath County, and so...
Well, and as busy as you've been, Jennifer, I think our vision is it's only going to get busier.
It is, it is. It really is. And I have, I'm working on certs, but it's not anything that is, is quick. And the state will definitely, they would come down here and visit and talk with anybody. It's a, it's a long process. So, I have my OIC, my building official, my plumbing, and some simple plan review, but I don't feel, I just don't feel comfortable with that, doing a simple plan review, just because I haven't been out. So, and then just working, just everything that goes on in the office, so.
And you've been holding things together really well, and we appreciate it, the certifications that you have gotten. I can't imagine that we could be in any better hands.
It's odd that Oregon lets you be, you know, Oregon has a different way of doing things as far as your building official certification versus having all these inspections and your licenses. It's more of how the programs run, where your funds go, what's being allocated, what's going on there, not necessarily to know the code and inspections, but just, I'll get there. It's not going to take a long time though, but Lake County and the contractors that have been in here and really concerned is my biggest worry right now. I don't want to hold them up. And I talked to Harney County, and it's, it's a while. I mean, the state... I mean, the state is very overwhelmed right now with doing inspections, and Lake County's not one that they really wanna come to.
So, and maybe Commissioner Winters is gonna ask about, I know there's been some discussion about, you know, videoing or picture taking, et cetera, to help us in this process, because our, our contractors, our builders, they understand the situation.
Yeah, yeah.
And hopefully, that's gonna be one of the.
Well.
And I think that some of those you can do, but the majority aren't gonna work with video, but some of them will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe that, I talked to the state one time, and I haven't been briefed from Jennifer yet exactly, but she's got the one. I've been working on a few things too, but anyways, they have done a sort of a pilot of doing some of that.
Yeah.
I believe with our remoteness, that that's an option for some of the things, like Jennifer says. The, the biggest thing that I see is as soon as we get our job posted for our other person in there that is, right now is gonna be spending a lot of their time on the building site as we have a resignation in there to build. Give Jennifer some time to get out of the office, get that cross-training that we need in there and everything, and we're gonna, Jennifer's been working very hard at it, putting things together, so.
So, going back with that in mind, to what you were talking about on last Friday, Saturday, I don't wanna ask you about that now, but are we gonna hear something later? Okay. Great, great. That's fine.
That is, if I can get, you know, three of you on board.
Yeah.
That doesn't always work that way, but.
No.
It's a great path, I think.
Well, I, we'll be, I know I'll be looking forward to hearing.
And I think our contractors would think the same.
Okay. Well, it can be.
Doesn't matter. Yeah.
Super.
Don't you do anything else?
No.
Okay.
Just thank you for all of your doing.
All right, thank you, guys.
You might want to stop Jennifer around for the discussion on IT, which right next on the.
Oh, okay.
If you'd like.
Well.
Well, there's Darwin speaking.
Okay, I am, sure.
Okay, so up next, Melanie, with the last meeting, we approved a canon lease for a printer, copier, and the building, finding department, that was a very late addition onto it. There was some discussion of the need to keep the old one, which we own outright, which has triggered a lot more discussion. Melanie coming on, has been doing some research on that, so that just sort of brought over you, and I'll let Melanie go from there.
Okay. I'm recommending that we monitor the old Rico's use in the new location to accurately assess how much use it's getting, determine whether it's a want or a need. Right now, we have numbers from what it's doing right now, but we won't know until it's putting use, what it's actually doing and contributing. It costs thirty dollars a month for maintenance, and that includes the toner, and that includes copies. So, if we discussed whether we should get a desktop, and that would be more affordable, but to do that would be more money, so I think we should just keep the one we have right now and assess how it's being used, what it's being used for, and then eventually, I'd like to streamline all of our copy needs to a new policy down the road. And then I have documentation from Darwin, and I have all of the building information that is needed.
So, the last part there, or next last part that Melanie talked about there, as I've worked with her and others on this, is for the future to look at going with one supplier for our copiers, printers, and eliminate all this out there, get a policy into place, go, well, it'll take a few years, but anyways, Melanie's already been on the research staff, worked with Ann Crummer and on that, hasn't got all the information together yet, but for efficiencies and for the amount of bills, accounts payable that go through per month are ridiculous, just cleaning that efficiency up alone. We, we've had this problem for years. We've talked about, we have printers, and we're, we're talking about countywide, we're not talking about general fund, we're talking about every county department, including Northlake, everything, is if we had one contract with one supplier, and that's the way it is. Now, they'll track which department, the amount that goes out to each department, we can do that internally, but we won't be doing twenty-five or thirty different accounts payable, or ten or fifteen, I don't know how many. But anyways, Melanie's working on that, and so that, I think, where she came to is let's just, just one printer, we'll just leave it there for right now until she's able to have more time to work on this, so that we can figure a transition way into a more efficient way to operate here.
So, I, I totally agree. Commissioner Melanie actually did share some of that information, especially on the building, and it was just crazy, and, you know, the economy of scale, if done right, really works well. And I would, I would suggest not, because we're gonna have our, our hands full getting arms around all the printers we have for one contract, but in the future, and we had this discussion ten years ago, is to look at some other high-use entities, whether it's governmental entities or whoever, to see if there's any way that it would make sense to go into a even bigger contract on a single provider that would cut our costs. You know, I, I don't think with the federal government, it's probably as doable, but with our local governments, other local governments and, and school districts and so forth, and that's for the future, but I think it'd be worth at least looking at.
So, whenever, whenever you see the amount of our leases slash loan, and the amount we pay for quick forward and all that, turns into real money to go back.
Oh, yeah.
Whole bunch of money. So, I'm looking forward to some newfound efficiency. We've had the discussion, but now we're going forward.
Well, I like how quickly you jumped on this, Melanie. Appreciate that, and your recommendation, I think, is more than doable and the right thing to do at this time.
It'll take about four years, according to the work that I talked to, to be down to one contract for the county. So, it won't be a quick process, but we can start bundling them down, and then that'll help a lot too.
Oh, yeah.
Well, to put it in perspective, if we would've done it ten years ago, as Dan says, we've been six years into the efficiency.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hi, Jan.
Hi.
Uh, Community Justice, Mr. Greer. Thanks for being patient. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Happy New Year to you, gentlemen.
Happy New Year to you. She never saw us before, so.
Which one would we like to start with first?
Well, let's, let's do the grant agreement that we're ratifying.
There's two of them.
There's two of them? All right.
Let's do the Criminal Justice Commission.
Let's do the Criminal Justice one first. And, or this is ratification, I'd like to go ahead and take care of this today, if the board agrees.
Are we doing the Criminal Justice Commission or Department of Corrections?
Yep. Criminal Justice.
Okay.
Assessment Grant Program, that's the first one I have here.
Criminal Justice, I spoke with Commissioner Shown, because we were in a time crunch, I got this in November, and we were in a time crunch, get this signed, get it back some year, starting our first quarter payments, which we should've got in October, and it was slowly getting out by the Criminal Justice Commission. Nevertheless, Commissioner Shown signed this on the twentieth of November. What this does, it just agrees, it just allows us to agree to accept four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty cents, the monies from the Criminal Justice Commission, of those monies. There was just over twenty-nine thousand that we didn't spend in fifteen seventeen, that we were able to roll over for our treatment court, hundred, just over hundred and forty-nine thousand. And then with that came ten percent to victim services, so new beginnings, received ten percent of our overall grant funding, and so did Lake County Crisis Center. And then a supplemental program for the Deputy DA for the District Attorney's Office, with that also came ten percent victim's money, so half of that goes to new beginnings, and half of that goes to Lake County Crisis Center. This is for the YAM, July first, two thousand seventeen, December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. There, should be July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
I would entertain a motion probably to, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Oh, I am, yeah. And it's, it's nothing, I'm already doing as far as, but my treatment court work, the new spin is the Deputy DA position.
So, Commissioner Shown, did you sign it, would you like to make?
Sure, I'll make that motion to approve this under airs. As I signed it.
To ratify it.
Yeah, and as I sent that, as soon as Commissioner Shown signed that on November twenty, I sent it to Criminal Justice Commission, and I just received about right before Christmas an email that they, when they had approved it, it was my signature, they've given this museum report.
So, it's been, did you second that motion?
No, I was waiting for exactly what the motion was.
To ratify the, the grant agreement between Ford and Criminal Justice Commission, Lake County, Community Justice, on our justice reinvestment grant program, grant agreement.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to ratify the agreement as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chair votes aye, motion carries. The second part is, this is.
This is the IGA five-five, six-five, Department of Corrections and Lake County Justice. This is another one to be ratified.
But, uh, rate for what that is.
Yes, but this allows currently myself and our adult staff in, within the Community Justice Adult Prohibition Department, when we leave our office, we don't have any remote access to any of the other computers. So, I had met with Miss Fortune, her departure, and Josh Semerowski, our IT person, to see what the benefit, pros and cons would be to, to join the county, IT side of county, our state, our, our state probation, IT stuff. There's a lot of cost involved because we have to pay AgTech more for the service. However, with Department of Corrections, we don't pay anything. We buy our own computers, we buy our keyboards, our monitors, our licenses for our software. There is an agreement out there that dates back to nineteen ninety-seven, it's in the eleventh forty-five, it's enacted, the Department of Corrections will fulfill IT fees for us. So, we have the beauty and luxury, I have an IT person who comes in and will work on our computers, send them up, and get them ready to go. So, when I first came to Lake County in two thousand twelve, after being in Marion County for almost ten years, I asked if it was possible for me to have access to my emails when I'm on the road, and I was told no. So, I started working up the chain to figure out why we couldn't.
Who told you that?
Department of Corrections, IT fees. So, I started going up the chain, working that command up, and I was met with no, because there's a cost. And my question to them was, okay, well, tell me what the cost is. They, they couldn't put a figure out there. They just told no, that they were overwhelmed with their own work, they couldn't support county services. So, fast forward to two thousand sixteen, the fall of two thousand sixteen, I was at a Community Corrections Directors meeting, and I rallied some rural counties that also have the same setup with Department of Corrections, Department of IT, and I asked them the importance, how important was to them to be able to have remote access for, especially emails, because at any given meeting, we're at least in Oregon, the meetings in, in the valley were run for three days, we had about a hundred emails, and half of them shouldn't respond to yesterday. So, there was a great interest. So, I started working with the Assistant Director of Community Corrections within Department of Corrections, Jeremiah Scumber. He started working with it, and he was told no, that we were a couple of years out from that. So, that still didn't set well with myself and eight other Community Corrections Directors in Oregon, so I had an abrupt, abrupt visit with the Director of Department of Corrections, called Peter, and explained my frustration, and she assured me she would look into it. They backed me. Last, January last year, about this time, Director Peters got back to me and said, wheels were in motion, I should be hearing from somebody. So, we were able to start the process. So, where we're at now is, we currently have felony issued cell phones, well, they're up for renewal, because they're five, five phones, Apple five phones, and they don't update like they should, the newer.
The newer.
So, Department of Corrections has ordered some new iPhones for us, we're paying for them, of course, and we continue to pay our monthly service. What this allows, they will set up the phone so we can have access to email over the phone. The cost to us outside of our normal cellphone allotment is a ninety dollars per month cost for a phone.
For a phone?
No, no.
Total?
Total cost. Total, and that's just ninety dollars to Lake County, and other counties also pay ninety dollars, and that's for the cost of the service to the network system. So, they, the Department of Corrections bought the server for us, they installed, they paid for all the work to be done on the server to support our, our county emails, and then we pay the cost, the monthly cost every month, and it's, it's ninety dollars per month, about a thousand three years for my county, which I feel is very manageable, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be a blessing to be able to have access remotely to our emails, not just for myself, but for my staff as well.
I'm honored to have part of it myself. I get my emails.
I get my county emails, I just, they haven't been able to forward the way the firewalls and their protection, security protections are, I can't forward my email, I stay on my own email. I went once, I had that phone. So, so, I met Commissioner Shown after talking to Commissioner Kessler, and Commissioner Shown approved me to sign that agreement, and so I'm here today asking for ratification of that.
So, I'll make a motion that we ratify the agreed-upon IGA number fifty-five, sixty-five Department of Corrections in Lake County, Community Justice, was signed. I didn't see the signature for the page, Jake, that signed it.
In the list.
Yeah, I, I didn't see it.
It's on page twelve seventeen.
Okay, so I didn't sign it.
I signed it.
On eleven thirty, two thousand seventeen.
That's correct, and then they, Department of Corrections, signed it and implemented on December first, two thousand thirteen.
Motion's been made and seconded to ratify the IGA agreement as stated, IGA number five-five, six-five. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Jake, and it looks like we, we've never listed it, you have one other item, it's a vehicle purchase, so.
Yeah, it's, it's transport.
Okay.
So.
So, before we go there, just back to your first agreement there and everything, you, is there any funds through the youth investment or any of that that we could leverage towards the friends of the library that, you know, a small amount or anything? You don't really have to say right now, but just to.
Probably not on the adult side, like you're looking at juvenile.
Juvenile side is what I was wondering.
I'm looking to see.
I'm not talking a lot of money or any, but they're, they're gonna have plenty, but anyways, you said through that presentation, I thought that might be something that sort of fits with our juvenile side, just a thought there.
Although our juveniles, we tend to work with you between the age of ten and seventeen, not so much. not so much.
Well, right, but, but if we help them out before they get there, if we don't deal with them from ten to seventeen, is where I was going, anyway, just setting that seed if you wanted to think about it.
Absolutely, thank you, Commissioner, so, we're talking about the vehicle purchase between the Town of Lakeview and Lake County Community Justice, about sixty days ago, I received written notification in the form of an email from Sheriff Taylor, indicating the sheriff's office will no longer transport community justice clients, came back in January of two thousand eighteen, I'm, I was, so I went to work, I had Commissioner Cashner made some options, there were a couple of options, one, we currently have a Tahoe, we were looking at investing, purchasing a cage, the seat, and the doors we worked and everything for that, but the cost, the cost would've been at or about this thirty-seven-five to make it workable and doable, if not more, because we wouldn't be able to do that here locally, we'd have to probably outsource that, so, talking with Chief Grindle from the town police department, indicated he had a two thousand two Chevy Tahoe, four-wheel drive, that was equipped with a cage, up-to-date radio communication system, the transport seats, the plastic transport seats, and then the rear doors were also for transport and accommodating the transport.
So, just before we go any further, because all these things are recorded, Jake, you had mentioned thirty-seven-five, that you're willing to mean three thousand seven hundred fifty?
Yes, yes, three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, I'm sorry, so, I met with Chief Grindle, we went over looked at the vehicle, started, it's clean inside now, the reason they, most like law enforcement agencies, like most law enforcement agencies, they rotate their vehicles out, and rotated this vehicle off sometimes in two thousand two, Grindle only has about a hundred and seventy, Travis, Chief Grindle didn't feel it was safe to be utilizing that kind of vehicle in a loop, shouldn't do a loop happen, so I'm trying to play the police, well, we're not in the business of doing a loop, it's we're in the business of just transporting our folks, and I believe, despite speaking with Sheriff Hubble, about the intent of the sheriff's letter, it was more or less, we go up on Wednesday, we go up once or twice a week to Christmas Valley to meet with our clients, should someone be in violation, currently if we arrest him, Rachel is at, or myself, we're up there alone, and we don't have a cage vehicle, so sheriff's office and transport doors, and if someone goes into transports, he's talking about, but we haven't had any of those kind of arrests in over two years, so I'm not.
I was, I was gonna ask you two things around that, just for the record, that was, how many times were we doing transports, and my understanding was pretty much none, and how much was the sheriff's office receiving from you to provide?
They currently receive, the general receives seven thousand dollars in the sheriff's office, the police side of things, receive about thirty-five hundred dollars a year, and those monies were to help offset, at the time, there was myself and Connie Nash, I wasn't always available to take weights for Connie, assist Connie with breathalyzers, so we utilized the general staff, the adult staff for that, and they were accommodating for training purposes, and also transports, but the transports on the adult side, they haven't happened, but I, I can appreciate Sheriff Taylor's stance that he's short-stopped and calls the service or off, so, I'm just trying to have.
And now the budget will be down, yeah.
So, I'm, I'm just trying to have a system of plays in the event that should we be up there, and we need to arrest somebody, we have a way of getting them down here, I, in speaking with Sheriff Hubble, I don't believe this involves, should they arrest one of our clients on a probation warrant, that we're not up there in the middle of the night, they have contact with them, they would transport that, because that's their arrest, or if one of our corrections clients gets arrested for nuclear activity, and they were lodged in the general, assuming they would still do that, this is specifically just to, we're up there doing home visits, and we find some of the violations, we can make a determination to reduce them to custody, we have a way of getting it back here.
Well, the, the questions I need answered to support this, which I am supportive of this, Jake, as you talked to me some, what's the clear policy, instead of the sheriff says this, and your department says this, the clear policy is says, well, who you're going to do and your department's gonna transport, because that's a pretty fine line, if we just say we're on new transport, if we have another county department says, well, we're not going to transport, and you say, well, you know, this is sort of criminal, that you need to be the one, I think the clear policy of what you're going, who, not who, but what justifies transport with this vehicle, the other thing is, is the, the monies that are going into the sheriff's department for transports and everything, I go back even further than what you're talking about, those funds way back was for transports and everything, all I've seen is an email is effective to date, we're no longer going to do it, but what are they no longer going to do, so I, I think the two departments, two county departments need to get, so that whether the public comes to us, or an employee comes to us, or something, we know what the policy is.
Sure.
So, we're talking on the same page, and if it's going to continue, I mean, I, I can support this as a stopgap, but a long-range plan, you know, you're probably going, if you're going to be doing transports forever, this might get you by for a year or two, but then you're gonna have to be transitioning into a vehicle that's a little bit newer than this, just for the safety of our employees, so, if this, if this is the way it's really going to go, and that department's going to throw those, not throw those, that department is not going to accept those dollars that you've been gracious and we've done through the budget committee, then you're gonna change those dollars over and put them into vehicles and doing those transports, and so, I, I sort of need to know what that picture really is.
Well, in speaking with Sheriff Hubble, he indicated they, they will continue, anytime they have, they encounter someone on a warrant or nuclear activity, they will continue to do their job of transporting those folks to jail, the folks he was, they were concerned about, were the folks that when we're up there doing home visits or office visits, and we have someone walk in, and we wanted to give those to custody.
And you said it's been zero in two years?
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like it was a concern.
So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where this came from.
Get it in policy is what I'm saying.
So, I'm gonna be, I have to have a transport policy, so I will be dropped in policy in the near future, very near future, outlining how to transport, who to transport, and where to transport.
I think that's, that's more than appropriate, so it would be all crystal clear on who we're not transporting.
And moving forward, this is just a stopgap, I communicate with Commissioner Shown to get this through, so I can sit back and reevaluate moving forward, I think moving forward, new vehicles and purchases, instead of having a big cage, probably a single cage, so we can do transport one person if I need to, it prevents that when we go to Christmas Valley, we end up bringing just one person back, we've taken three or four of the sheriff's office transport vehicle in the past, and we've brought three or four people back to Christmas Valley, so.
Well, generally, generally our investments are for the need, and we have a need occasionally, but what I'm hearing today is in two years, we've had zero need, so, you, like you say, it's a stopgap, you have to think this out, and is there a way to make one vehicle, it's a dual purpose or something like that, the most efficient way you can do it, but, but the good thing is, is that with your budget, you're not gonna be transporting those dollars over into another department, so that gives you some flexibility to build and have sort of work on this.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we've talked about this quite a bit, we mentioned no transport in the last two years, but then you mentioned earlier, I mean, more recently, that you had three folk persons at a time.
The sheriff's office didn't transport those folks, I took the county vehicle, County Jack's for expedition, up to Christmas Valley, and we conducted a round of the folks that had warrants and were in violation and need to come back, so I did those transports, myself and one of my staff.
Well, and there is a need for transport, it's just been a slow two years for recent, the transfer that is necessary.
But the sheriff's office has the transport force, because I've provided transport, he just knows the sheriff's office, you know, for verification, but, yeah, the needs there for a standard vehicle, that's not for the right thing.
Now, one question, I think I missed a figure, one time, this car, this vehicle that the town has, a hundred and seventy thousand miles or so, and you would drive it on every occasion going up, or only when you know you're gonna have it transported?
That's when I'm gonna sit back and reevaluate, and I'll meet with my staff and get there and put it as well, I see any, any time we go up there, there's a potential for a arrest, so we may be taking that up every, every day, every one, every time we go up there, so I don't know why it's gonna have up, but again, this is just a short-term solution to a long-term problem, so, I intend to, so I can evaluate and see how often we use it, what our needs are, and.
And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but the best things for this short-term, what made me want to support it is, it's all equipped, radio and everything, so there's a cost savings there, and that gives you the, the breathing room, because you have the radio, you have everything, and the right seats, right cage, until you're able to say, okay, what do I wanna do, so the radio thing was really important to me, Jake.
Radio thing, and having it set up, the cage, and appropriate seat, and appropriate seatbelt system, and the door locks.
And I do want, want to tell you, I appreciate this because of, you just got an email that this other department wasn't going to do it anymore, and for you to be proactive, jump on and try to find the, the stopgap, as cost-effective as you can, until you decide what the long-range plan is, thank you, appreciate that.
I appreciate that.
Also, that particular vehicle, that's a black and white now, with police on site, is that the one, so, the one that Travis have, is a black and white?
No, it's a white Tahoe, it's just white, it had a, by the way, Lake County Police Department decals on it, the fire department, dispatch, they had a heat gun, they were able to move everything off, it looks really nice, I've seen it, it's parked out.
I haven't seen it since they worked on it.
Waiting for us to pick up, so.
So, I'm, I'm individually pretty staunch on the policy, put together what kind of timeframe you think you'll build, work with the sheriff's department and come up with it, so that you're both on the same page.
I'm already working with Sheriff Hubble, Lake County, in the very near future right now, I don't know, we're gonna get scheduled.
Could you get that done by the end of the month?
Thursday, I would hope so.
By the end of January?
Right now, we have, we're working on our current off-security and all those policies that come with that, we have a meeting on Thursday before, so.
Well, the reason why I say by the end of January, we're starting into budget time just here shortly.
Absolutely.
And all this plays into their budget, your budget, vehicle budget, or.
So, before you leave, you just mentioned Thursday, the fourth, just double checking on where are you guys meeting?
You know, I'm not exactly sure.
Because Melanie has this room scheduled for ten, and then I don't know if we have it scheduled for one, for our vote on our state senator.
Yeah, I have skipped with the one call, we do need this for, in the conference.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Will this make sure we don't have overlapping meetings?
Maybe in our conference room, so, I don't think we'll be until two in the afternoon on Thursday, so I'm not sure for.
Well, I don't know that twos, well, two might still be a conflict, we're gonna be on the.
We have the January grand jury.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Jake.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr.
Like a thirty-minute break before we get to date?
Thanks.
Come on up, let's get the over.
I didn't say, I didn't say.
Okay, we're gonna take a supply of a minute break.
You guys think I got better than you do?